Hey, welcome everybody to the Mount Pili City Council meeting on May 12th. I'd like to start us off with a quick prayer. Father God, we thank you, thank you Lord for this day, for a beautiful day in our community. Thank you for our community. We pray for vision to see opportunities and avoid problems, Lord. Guide our, guide our meeting, guide our council, Lord. Help us to be excellent leaders. Help us with being able to see areas, how to improve them and avoid problems. And we pray, pray for Michael Smith, Lord. Thank you that his surgery went well. And we pray that you quick, for a quick recovery. Blessings on him and bless our meeting in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. How are you? And, okay, call the order, or roll call?
Corey Roberts.
Here.
Gary Cagle.
Here.
Travis Sills.
Here.
John Morgan.
Here.
Mayor Naff.
Here.
Okay. And communications, I'm not sure.
Anything on the agenda?
Oh, yes, as a matter of fact, on the agenda, want to add the jamboree and on, under new business and also under unfinished business, an EMA update with Bill Smith. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as shown?
Motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Travis motioned.
I'll second it.
Corey second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we have the minutes also. To have a motion to approve the minutes as presented from our April 14th meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Corey motioned.
I'll second.
Gary second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right, new business. Well, first off, I want to say, I guess I have to, I want to say congratulations to our new businesses that are coming to town. We just opened up Positive Vibes Coffee Shop, which is right beside our Indian. That's going to be a great little coffee shop for us. And on Thursday, we have a grand opening for Frosties again. They're going back to the name Frosties. So that'll be great. So I'm excited about our new businesses in town. And first on the agenda is our city parks sign ordinance. I honestly thought we already had this, but we didn't. It's basically, it says that anybody who puts a sign in in our parks has to have approval first. And not that we're going to withhold approval very easy. The only thing I'm really, don't really like is businesses when they just want to advertise their, their business and leave it in there for several months. But, you know, nonprofit advertising and fundraiser or something, a community service or something like that. I think that's a, we certainly need to be open to those things. But, but I'd like to go ahead and approve, no, we can't approve this one, do we? Do we approve it? Okay, we can approve it. So the ordinance basically just says it has to go through the border works as presented. So is there any discussion on that? Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
Do we have an ordinance number for that?
It'll be 2025-02.
02, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2025-02.
And I'll second.
Okay, Travis motioned, John seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and this second one is not official, but I just want to open us up for discussion, actually. And Chief Snyder just stepped out. But our, on Main Street, I don't know if anybody's noticed, our speed limit going through downtown is 30 miles an hour. That's way too fast for downtown. I was talking to Chief Snyder and he agreed. And Chief Snyder, do you want to comment on our speed limit? Do you have a minute? Okay.
Yeah, so Snyder approached me today and asked me about it and I, I told him I didn't see a problem with lowering the speed limit. I mean, I always thought there was, I just thought it was odd anyway that the speed limit downstairs at 18 is 25 when you come through town, but it's 30 on Main Street. I think that there's a benefit to safety by consideration of lowering it, 20 to 25 mile an hour. You know, a lot of that comes from crashes and reports that I've taken over the years uptown. It's not going to prevent somebody from backing out and getting hit. But what it will do is lower the risk of significant damage to a vehicle or injury by reducing the speed just in a way of reducing the force or inertia from a faster speed.
Yeah, I, you know, we have so many pedestrians, they, you know, it's just Mount Pili tradition. We know no one goes to crosswalks. There's many people that don't. We don't need some car going 30 miles an hour through the downtown area. Because a lot of times though, 35 is, if the speed limit's 30, they'll, they're going 35.
Or faster down Main Street.
Yeah, or faster. I just, I think it's, I'd like to lower it. And what's your recommendation?
Well, I've got a couple extras since I spoke with you. I think, I think 20, 25 maximum. But maybe also something worthy of consideration is the speed limit all the way down Main Street from where you come in on the south end of town where it's currently 30, reducing that as well all the way down Main Street. At least down to Windsor Street anyway.
So to Windsor from, so Monroe to Windsor?
Or you can even go further south if you elected to. That's 30 all the way down Main Street.
Okay. Oh, it is, okay.
Going out to the end of town.
Well, yeah, we could lower that to 25 there. I mean.
Is where your sign, is it like Main Street extended where it's going out and coming in? Is that where your signs are right now?
Just a little past that right there. Just as you start to make that curve, it goes up to 45.
Okay.
So I think I'll write to Travis where the point's at, Main Street and Franklin Street.
Okay.
The other thing a slower speed does is allow for a little better time of reaction gap, reactionary gap. The person does have to step on the brake.
Yeah, I, I agree. We don't want, I think 30 is too fast for that road. Well, do you want to make Main Street beyond Monroe 25? Main Street going north of Monroe 20 to Windsor? Would that, would that make sense?
Say that again.
Okay, so, so from basically, if you're going, if you're going south on Main Street, starting at Windsor, actually just going, starting on Main Street, the beginning of Main Street, 20 miles an hour until you get hit to go to Monroe. And then after Monroe, going south 25 until you get out of town.
Yeah, I don't see, I don't see an issue with that.
Do we want to just so, leave us on the agenda for next, leave us out for a month and talk about it? Okay, all right, let's just, we'll talk about it and see, get some community feedback if that's, and we'll talk about it next month and vote on it next month. So, or does anybody have anything they want to say at this point? Okay. Okay, unfinished business, now we.
No, David.
Oh, you're right, the jamboree, yes. Mr. David Harriet is here with the Mount Pili Jamboree. You want to step up to the mic? Is it on? Well, I had a real nice compliment from somebody just talking about how well-run the, the Mount Pili Jamboree is. They said, they, they really, they said it's always just very well-run.
Well, a lot of the, this year, we had our ups and downs and I was at the point, my wife and I, where we were just ready to, we were done with it. I got one person in this room who really, it's Kim, really talked to us and to me, would listen to us. If you get more help, you know, can we do this? So we said, okay, hesitantly, but no, we are, we're doing really well this year.
Okay.
What I passed out is, it's kind of, it's a list of our events for this year's jamboree. And Kim's put a lot of time in this. She's, she's the one who kind of does all this stuff. She posts stuff and prints this stuff up. So my job's easy. I call her up if you're in the home to the glow factory, say, hey, Kim, I need four forms. And within 10 minutes, she's, they're here, they're done for you. So, so she put a lot of time into this. And we did get it back to Labor Day weekend. I know this is like the fourth time it's been changed over the years. But the Carnival company last year sat down with me and he agreed to a three-year contract.
Very good.
So for next three years, it'll be on Labor Day weekends, which is good. That's the best time to have it. I mean, we used to know the Wednesday through the Saturday. You know, a lot of people come home for the, for the Labor Day weekend. And I will say this, I'm not sure if everybody's seen it on Facebook or on our jamboree page, but our ban this year was supposed to be Colin Ray. We found out two weeks ago that he double booked. And he could not get out of this commitment with this, with the first contract that he signed. So he travels with Aaron Tippin. So Aaron Tippin has agreed to come and play and instead of Colin Ray for this year. So that was kind of, we had a choice. That's kind of what we were looking at to begin with. But unfortunately, the prices was just too much. Well, he agreed to come down to what we were going to pay Colin Ray.
Okay.
So that's, that really worked out well.
That's great.
I haven't seen much backlash on Facebook. And even if, if we do, it's, you know, everybody's entitled to their opinion. And I just, I can't tell our committee members, but I asked them, don't comment back in a negative way.
Right.
You know, people's going, we're going to hear it. Anybody who goes on social media, you're going to hear a backlash. But be the bigger person and just let them have their own opinion. And if you want to respond back, do it in a positive, a positive way. Don't make, you know, us look bad and don't come down to their level. So we have some, some new things this year. Let's see here. Like on, on page two, we have a magician. Oh, oh yeah, oh yeah. See that already, she's already saving me. And we have a balloon gentleman who's going to make enough stuff for the kids. We're going to have the petting zoo again this year. And we're bringing back an event we had several years ago. It's the backseat golf cart driving contest. And we're going to have a hay, a hay bale throwing contest, which good luck with that one. And we're having the, the, our concerts, of course. Like Thursday night's going to be, you know, we're going to have our two queens contest. And then Joel's going to come up and play Thursday evening. The church service, I'm in touch with Jesse Johnson. He does, he has to get ahold of a couple of more pastors. And, but we're working on that also. That should be Sunday morning, just kind of getting a time for that. But once we have that, you know, that'll be finalized.
Okay.
Did I miss anything? Okay. And the vendors from last year heard a lot of compliments on the, the variety of food that we had. It wasn't too much of this or too much of that. And when I found out last year on that Saturday evening that we was going to go back to Labor Day weekend, I spent all day Sunday calling every vendor and they all want to come back. Last year, nobody left last year. Everybody made a profit.
Wow.
So I'm not taking on anymore because I don't want to have six people selling the same thing. Our goal is for the vendors to come in and for them to make money. So for us to have several more, just to make it look bigger, I won't do that. It's not fair to them. We don't make a lot of, we don't base our revenue off of the vendors. Our booth, our booth space is very cheap because it's not fair for me to come in and charge somebody $700. And there's $700 in the hole before they ever get their stuff off, off their truck. So ours is very, very reasonable. And they said that we're the cheapest one around and that we should raise it. So, well, I, I don't want to do that. Then it was like, well, I'm not making any money. So, and as always, it's a family-based jamboree. We put a lot of work in this year and if the weather holds up, hopefully this will be one of the, one of our, our bigger jamborees that we've ever had. The gentleman last year, he's bringing five more rides than he brought last year. So our space is, we're maxed. I can't, we don't have nowhere else to go. That's why we're putting that new box down by the legion on that pole. So we could extend the power. So we don't, you know, blow breakers or something goes out and this goes out and that goes out. So this is going to help us with, with the power issue. So do you have any questions on, on anything for me? So my next question is with regards to the beer tent. Now, I would like also to ask, and if this doesn't go through, I, I understand. We were wondering this year if it would be okay with the council that we also, along with the beer, sold the wine slushies. Some of the ladies don't like the beer. And they like, it's, and our permit is beer and beer and wine. It's not the hard alcohol at all. It's just, our permits is, it's a beer and wine. And we've had several people ask us, well, do you ever do slushies? I'm like, I don't. So I guess we could, we could try it. Now, like I say, up here every year, our goal is not to get anybody drunk. And we have every right to turn somebody away if we feel that they have had too much to drink. And if we don't see it and Chris sees it, he'll say, cut them off. So that's kind of, but that's just extra revenue that the jamboree can, that we can make. So I don't have to go to these businesses and just keep asking for money and ask us. I hate doing that. I just, I despise it. But unfortunately, the way things are now and you support that we can have to make the jamboree, you know, stay and each year increase a little bit better and better. Because now we're to the point where we're up here and we don't want to go back down to here. So that's why we work year-round to, to try to have a jamboree. And I did see that this year that Chris has purchased several of the, the big cement barriers that we're going to place around town also. So it doesn't happen what happened down in New Orleans. I decided to turn this way. So we're going to, it's always safety. It's, it's a safety first. Safety first, or family first jamboree. And as long as I'm with a jamboree, that's never going to change. And my phone's always turned on. So if there's any questions that you have, even when I leave, leave tonight, hey, I need to ask you this, can we, can we talk about this? My phone's always turned on. So I'll never, never get out of answering a question for anybody. So.
Well, do you have a motion to, well, jamboree to serve? Basically, beer and wine, beer and wine, yeah.
It's, it's, it's going to be slushies. It's not going to be just something.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, John motions.
I'll second.
Okay, Corey seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And I do have one more thing to say. This isn't a jamboree related, but I just want to give a special thank you to Cameron Bonnewatt and the city workers for having this town look, I've never seen this town look so nice. And I know it goes back to you and it goes back to all the councilmen up here. But the town looks great. It just looks super.
They have done a great job.
Cameron is doing a wonderful job with that. And I'm sure all of his workers, he, he worked for him and also for you. So the town looks wonderful. So it's job well done. And we're taking a step like this. So I just wanted to say thank you. And everything looks great. So if anything that we can do as a jamboree to help out, just let us know, okay?
And what year is the, the jamboree? What, how many years is this?
79.
79, wow. So next year will be the 80. Wow, that's pretty awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great. That's great.
It's, we've had our ups and downs. So, I got, I got an air biking contest, you know. Four years ago, when we, when Jess decided to pull out, I was like, why? And I found this guy out of Cincinnati. Then he more or less said, well, we don't want you back. And then we got a reference, another guy in Ohio. And it was just as bad. So, and then we got lucky. My son found, his name's Val Gorman. That's who our Carnival guy is this year. And he's decided to sign a contract for three years on, on Labor Day. So that's, that's a big, a lot of stress off of us. So. But like I said, my phone's always on. If I can be any help with any questions, just call me morning, day or night.
Okay, great.
All right, I sure appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Second committee for all that you guys do. It's always a well-run event. Like, like I said, it was a county official said that. I, so they were, they were saying how, how well-run it is. So they had experience. So. All right, thank you. All right, all right. Now we're on to unfinished business. Let's have Bill go first.
I just got a couple of things, a reminder of the June 5th Railroad 101 meeting here. It will be at the fire station. Six o'clock, six to eight. And I talked to Bobby, those who are coming directly from work, they're going to provide food for everybody. So I thought that was a really, I didn't hear about you.
I didn't know that.
So Travis was cooking, so.
Oh, well, there we go.
He's providing the hot dogs.
He'll be ready when you get there.
I know. Meat and cheese trays.
Hot dogs and, you know, stuff like that.
Oh, I know.
Also, please put on your calendar, Ju, or November 6th. That's a long way off, I know. But that will be our CEMP slash LEPC workshop for the county for our year. We're required by law to have, we're going to combine them this year so we can not have so many meetings. That will be at the fire station again. This, the topic will be a, according to the railroad, a railroad emergency in Mount Pili. But actually, it's going to be a train wreck.
Same thing, this is June, June 5th.
Uh, November 6th.
But, but that's the same topic or same?
It's the same topic.
Okay, all right.
Well, one is the workshop and this will be the exercise.
Oh, okay.
This is going to be, the June 5th is a teaching thing.
Okay.
And what I encourage people to do is to bring questions, the what ifs. You know, the things he doesn't bring out or doesn't say, you know, things you're curious about. What happens if the train crashes into the gas tanks down here or something? You know, the valves shut off automatically. So with that November 6th, we'd like to have everybody on board for that. It's going to be an evening meeting so that everybody can participate. It's going to be, we're, we're going to put everybody together, government officials here, fire, police, so forth. And they will work through various scenarios of what they will do in case of, of a horrible accident here. And one of the things we're going to discuss is for the, your board, what happens if Brad is incapacitated?
Yeah, which we've talked about. I'll be, I'll be the first one to know if there's a train accident.
Yeah, the train goes through this building.
What is it, 20, 20 yards maybe?
And we want you to work through a scenario. Who's the next person in line? What are you going to do?
Corey.
You're going to have to start, you're going to have to start making decisions. And if he's out too, then the next person in line has to make governmental decisions. And I have to have a person come to and say, we need this. And it basically comes down to, you have to pay for it. So our auditor is ready. I just want to give Lisa a, just a big shout out. I was meeting with her yet, the other day, and she has her folders all ready. She has her paperwork all down, ready to go. So if we have a disaster, she's got everything there. And FEMA comes in or the state comes in, they want to see your paperwork. And so we got it down. Because there's such a thing as overtime hours because you're going to work around the clock and you have to pay your employees. You have to keep a record of all that. The people sitting in the offices, people have, they see the workers out here cleaning up all the mess, but people have no idea of the paperwork that has to be done. And decisions have to be made done behind, behind the scenes. So we want to work through those scenarios so that you're ready for an emergency. And it's not of, okay, we're going to come and criticize you because you don't know. What we're expecting is you're coming with questions as to what should I do at this time? We want it to be a learning experience, not a critical experience. Does that make sense? Okay, that's all I got.
Very good. Thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Bill. Thanks, Bill.
Very good, very good. Okay, well, we also talked about whether we're to do a large truck, heavy truck parking on city streets ordinance. And basically, we're to, we were to get feedback. Did you guys get any feedback from that? No?
Just talked to the one guy down by me. And so if, say they park their truck out there on our property and it gets broken into, is the city responsible for that?
Nope.
Well, then, I don't think that's right. I mean, if you'd have, you'd make them park out there. I mean, you don't have no cameras or anything like that. That sucks for them.
Yeah.
But driving around the last couple of days, I only saw two even on the streets, both 100 yards from my house. Neither one bothered me.
Yeah.
So I think that one person complaining about two people and it's 0.001% of the population of the town, I would, I would vote down the ordinance if it were for me. I would vote no against it. So that's just my opinion. Everybody's entitled to theirs. But that's how I feel.
Okay. Well, the feedback I got was one, one from a trucker who does park on the streets. He's, he said he would like, if, if we were going to do that, to allow his, his trailer to be parked there and him to drive the truck home. And, but then I got another comment from someone else who, who just thought that was a terrible idea. And then I've talked to some other people, majority of people honestly are indifferent. And so at this point, because I don't think there is a huge problem with this. But so that's, that's the feedback I got.
Well, the, the one complaint, and the, where the complaint lies is they're done truck driving, so they're retired and the truck won't be there again. So that was the one complaint. So that, that is done.
So this was on a former truck driver? Or no, this was?
As of, as of yesterday.
What, so what was their, their complaint?
Well, the, the one I seen on Facebook was just you couldn't see because of kids running back and forth across the street and the semi was parked there on the street.
Okay.
Just congestion of not being able to see, you know, pedestrians entering the street, you know, being hit.
Well, that was a comment I actually did get. I forgot about that one. The, the, the one guy that I talked to normally parks his trailer there. That, yeah, he can't see very well when he does park his trailer on the street. So it does make it harder to, when you're pulling out. So. You guys have any thoughts on what we should do?
I'm kind of with Travis. I don't think it's necessary.
Okay. Yeah, I'm the same. Not necessary.
I feel the same way. If, if it was an overabundance of it, then it'd be different. But for the few, the few that's here, I'm fine with it.
And that's not to say that if things start, you know, to escalate where you have many, you know. Yeah, I mean, you'll always go back and review it.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, very good. Okay, we'll table that one then. And, all right. I think that's the end of our agenda. So is there anything else anybody wants to talk about? Do you have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting. That was common counsel.
Okay. I'll second.
Gary second. All in favor say aye. Gary second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.